Southbridge Town Council Meeting, Monday, February 24, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chamber. First Agenda, Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to move on to Roll Call. Town Manager?
Thank you. Chairman Lazo?
Present.
Place Chairman Montigny?
Present.
Council Shinya?
Present.
Council Daniel?
Present.
Council Dow?
He's gonna be late.
Council Kelly?
Present.
Council McCetty?
Excused.
Council Ortiz?
Excused.
Council Rivas?
Present.
We have a quorum. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Considered Accept the Meeting Minutes
of January 27, 2025. We'll vote them individually. Do I motion?
Second.
The motion by Council Shinya, seconded by Council Montigny. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of the meeting? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to February 1, 2025, regular session. Do I motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
And seconded by Daniels, motion by Shinya. Any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes of the meeting? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to February 3, 2025, Joint Session with the School Committee?
So moved.
There's a motion by Shinya?
Second.
Seconded by Daniels. Any additions, correction, or deletion to the minutes of those meetings? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to Subcommittee's. Department of Public Works, Council Shinya?
Mr. Chair, we had a meeting last Thursday night, and I believe it's Items Number Nine, Ten, and Eleven. We're all voted unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Moving on to Education, Human Services, Counselor Montigny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was no meeting, and we have no meeting scheduled this time.
Moving on to General Gov. Council Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The General Government Committee met on Thursday, February 20, and Agenda Items Number Twelve, Thirteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, and Nineteen were recommended for approval to the Council.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Planning and Development, Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had no meetings. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening. It's 6:00 PM in the Planning and Development Office.
Moving on to Protective Depressive Property. No report at the sound. Counsel Dow's running late.
Mr. Chairman, no, we will be scheduling a meeting. The Fire and Police Chiefs have some items coming up, so we will be working on scheduling that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Moving on to Chairman's Announcements. I got a couple items. First of all, we had a great employee, Mark General, who passed away on February 30th, February 3, 2025, made a significant contributions to our community during the 30 years of service with the town from August 12, 1991, to September 1, 2021. In addition to his work at the Town Hall, he had previously managed the CETA program in town and spent the last three years assisting the Assessors' Office with data collection on part-time basis. At this time, I'd like to call for a moment of silence for Mark General. Thank you very much. Moving on to my second item. I'd just like to congratulate Gillian Lombardi, sixth-grade teacher at De Wells Middle School. She was awarded the Milken Educator Award. She's the only teacher in the state of Massachusetts that won it. I would just, from the Town Council, congratulate her on her accomplishment. And finally, just a comment on the last storm. To the citizens of Southbridge, please be patient. This was a storm like we never endured. I've been plowing for decades, and never did I see a storm where you got three inches of snow, a little bit of ice, torrential rains, and then 19-degree weather immediately. Our bylaw allows approximately 48 hours to clear your sidewalks, and I think what happens is, because it froze to the decks, nobody could shovel the sidewalk. People were running around trying to get equipment to do it. I'd just like to thank the people for being patient. This was a one-in-a-million storm. We normally don't have this problem, but I think moving forward, again, another education. And as my Uncle Andy, a former council, used to say, "God shall giveth, God shall taketh." And I think with the temperatures we're having this week, the ice will go away, and we will move on with our lives. And thank you for your patience. Moving on to Town Managers' announcements. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Just, again, to follow up on the storm, I know there's a lot of posts out there on Facebook relative to the sidewalks not being cleared. Again, it was a very difficult storm. For those that ask if we enforce the bylaw, we do certainly enforce the bylaw. The Police Department is out issuing citations, and when they do issue citations and talk to different various businesses, they also take photographs of that. So every citation they take does have a photograph attached, and it is through the 21D process that we issue those citations. So we do go out there and enforce those regulations as best we can, given everything else they do. So, again, with the warmer weather, we hope that it should assist in clearing of walks, and we thank the DPW for the job that they did do, because it was a very difficult storm. Not only our town, but other towns had a difficult time with it. Just an update on the municipal electric aggregation plan. I did receive an email today. The email from the program was to notify us that there will be an upcoming sweep for any newly eligible account holders in the municipality. They will be issuing a mailing on February 28, 2025, with an opt-out date of April 2, 2025. That is no cost to the town. We do not pay for that. That's all through the program, through the electric companies. These routine sweeps will be done periodically to offer program benefits to newly eligible account holders for the program. Those would include those who have moved into the municipality, but with a new account, or those coming off pre-existing third-party supplies, and documents will be mailed. There are approximately 509 account holders that will be sent for this sweep, so it shouldn't be a massive mailing, but just those to get them into the program. For the Councils, the Fire Station Project bids will be advertised as of March 5. Those bids will be out. Our sub-bids will be received on March 26, 2025. Final bids due on April 9. Pre-qualification process saw about the same number of subcontractors, which we had a substantial number of. We did have an increase of approximately four more general contractors and some very good contractors, so we're hoping to get some aggressive bids on that. If all goes well, we'll be looking to stack construction June 1. Counselor McCetty had given me an inquiry the other day on a report that came out on WCVB. We got in opioid funds. Just so the Council knows and the public knows, we have a Town Managers' Substance Abuse Council that has been meeting regularly on that. Counsel Rivas sits on that with, along with the Fire Chief, Police Chief, and other community partners. We have regular meetings, and we have had extensive conversations about what the use of that is. There was the article stated how many funds. We have not expended any funds, but we do have, are now working on the plan in place with our partners. And we actually already had discussed having a presentation tentatively scheduled for next meeting with the Council just to give a report. So that was going to be forthcoming, as it was to raise funds. It's been kind of difficult figuring out what you can and cannot do, and we're actually, we participated in office hours this week on some of recommended uses. Also, Town Council, I did notify, but for the public, due to cuts within the federal government, our grant for our urban forestry grant was taken back from the federal government, and as such, we had to lay off a part-time employee for that. As more and more activities come in the federal government, when it comes specifically to grant programs and other HUD programs and school programs, we had, my office is taking a very hard look at what grants we have out there. We have a good handle on what our town-side grants are. My concern is on the school side, because if school grants are taken away, the school does rely heavily on those grants. What effect that may or may not have on our regular operating budget, because we would still have to beat certain levels of spending. So we're actively watching what comes down through the pipeline on a daily basis, just to let everybody know on that. And finally, I'd like to thank Katie Tilton-Alicea, or Alicia Tilton, Mike Brunel on opening the RES. RES, for the last about three weeks, we finally had cold weather, while cold weather, a lot of us don't like it. It did give an opportunity for that facility to be used for ice skating, and I know it was very actively used. So not only them, but the volunteers, A.J. Larashell, I know Kathy Granier was up there, and I don't want to miss any volunteers, but that volunteer program, to have that open. It has not been opened in a long time, so it was great to see all the activity going on at the RES, and I thank them for that. I think with the warmer weather, that's probably coming to an end, unless we have another cold snap, but thank you all for participating, and we'll look forward to some summer programs. And I think that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Presentations. There are no presentations tonight. Moving on to Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the Council on any issues that are not on the agenda? State your name and address.
Good evening. Kevin Buxton, 52, Charlton Street. I appreciate the fact that the Town Manager already covered two subjects, which I wish to speak of. Last Council meeting, there was a little discussion about homelessness. There are subjects that are hard to discuss: homelessness, opioid addictions. The fact that we have adequate funding means that we can have programs like this that are going to be a safety net for those people who require them. I don't have a solution to either one of the problems, but I think when it comes to homelessness, we're looking at situations getting more dire because of the escalation in rents and the lack of available, affordable housing. We have programs for subsidized housing, but what we really need is affordable housing for working-class people to be able to afford. The rents have gone up. You can't blame a landlord for not wanting to make the money to enrich his investment. I can't blame the landlords. And in the, like I said, with the situation with the opioid, where there is, when there is available funding, the safety net is secured, but we don't always have the available funding. And with the other subject that the Town Manager mentioned, the recent cuts to urban forestry. I like trees. Everybody likes trees. The town has a vast inventory of trees that, prior to our urban forestry, was pretty much, wasn't supervised. There is maintenance that required to keep a tree healthy, and sometimes when they die, they need to be removed. All expenses that were going to be covered under urban forestry. The cuts in the federal government, you, some people might say, "Well, it's about time, cut the fat," but let me remind something, a little mathematics, that I, budget is not my big thing, but two out of every three dollars spent by this town comes from somewhere else, either the federal or the state government, 66%. Now, 50% of that 66 pretty much goes for our public education. So that only means, well, there's only about 16%. Well, if anybody has any plans on where we would cut 16% of our town's operating budget, I'm waiting to hear. You know, it's scary. It would be nice if we didn't have to rely on that subsidy. It would be nice if we were a more affluent community who didn't receive the federal and state funding that we do, but we have grown to live on it, and we're going to have some tough times coming ahead. Nobody wants to see 16% of our, of any one department, never mind all departments, being cut. All I can say is, you're in the hot seat. Good luck. And let's hope it doesn't get too difficult. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other citizens that would like to address the Council on any issues that are not on the agenda? If there's nobody at this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Vote to Confirm the Town Manager's Appointment of John Ledger as the Lead Mechanic of the Department of Public Works, effective immediately.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Counsel Shinya. Counsel Shinya, recommendation to Subcommittee?
This was unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Unanimous to Subcommittee. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 10. Vote to Confirm the Town Manager's Appointment of Vernon Jackson as the interim DPW Director to serve until a permanent replacement is hired.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinya. Counsel Shinya?
This was unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Any discussion on this issue? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 11. Vote to Confirm the Town Manager's Appointment of Vernon Jackson to the Department of Public Works, Project Manager, A7, on a part-time basis, effective immediately.
Second.
Motion by Dow. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Shinya. Counsel Shinya?
This was, there was one recourse from the meeting, and otherwise it was unanimously approved.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present.
One abstention, please.
One abstention, I'm sorry. Counsel Shinya abstained. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12. Vote to Confirm the Town Manager's Appointment of Daniel Grabowski to the Liquor Licensing Board, effective immediately until June 30, 2027, pending completion of ethics, state ethics.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. Any discussion? Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was discussed at the General Government Meeting on February 20, and was unanimously approved to the Council.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Would you like to make a speech, Mr. Grabowski? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 13. Vote to Transfer $6,250 from Account 001132578100, Town Council Reserve, to Account 001111571100, Town Council Conference Meeting, Town Manager's Office. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was discussed at the General Government Meeting on February 20, and you unanimously approved to the Town Council.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14. Vote to Authorize Antendura Contract with, for services between the town of Southbridge and Solitude Lake Management in the amount of $2,217 from the treatment of the RES recreation area for FY 2026, and allow the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow. Subcommittee?
This was not on the...
No, it was DPW.
It was DPW? I'm sorry. That was unanimously approved by all present.
Any further discussion? Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item, you know, is usually a topic every year that people say, "Do we really need this?" And it's just great, again, to echo some of the comments from earlier that the RES was able to open this year. After five or six years, they were open many more days than expected. They got lucky through the February vacation. They were able to open during then. And all the people involved, the people who really kept this place alive, maybe two or three years ago, when the building in the area even looked like it needed some extra TLC, A.J. and Judy Larashell, their family, has just been paramount in keeping this open. And then all the people who came together this year did an excellent job to run the place. I can't wait to see it in full force next year. And with treatments like this, you know, there's always opportunity for us to find more use for it during the summer and spring months, fall months. So thank you, everybody, for always supporting the RES and this item every year. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 15. Vote to Accept the Bid Proposal in the Amount of $95,747 from Capital Carpet and Flooring Specialties Incorporated, and authorize the Town Manager to enter into a contract and sign all related paperwork for the installation of the floor coating at the Southbridge Water Treatment Plant, Treatment Facility, I'm sorry. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a second by Dow. Counsel Shinya?
This was unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16. Vote to Opt Out of Early Voting by Mail for the Annual Southbridge Town Election to be held in June 2025 in accordance with the Votes Act of 2022, Section 25B.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion, a second. Counsel Kelly, this did not go to Subcommittee?
No.
Not this past week?
This is the public hearing.
Okay. Any discussion? Counsel?
In light of the hearing and for the residents that spoke, I thank you for all sharing your perspectives. And I do agree, in a climate where voting rights are being suppressed all over the country, it's really important for us not to create more obstacles in order to save, I know it saves a little bit of money, but I think that in speaking to residents, not only the ones who we heard from here, as I visited Trade Winds Clubhouse and people there, you know, as I informed them about this hearing today, were expressing how important early voting is to them and how accessible voting has been for many people who often don't have that access and can't get to the community center. And I agree. I do like to go in personally and see people and vote on that day, but there's so many people in our community that don't have that access, and to create more obstacles doesn't seem to go with the spirit of what our Constitution established, right? Voting is a really sacred thing that we want as many of our residents to participate in, and I don't see, I don't see, I see that it's worth spending that extra money to mail out the early voting information to people, because that does create more access for our residents. And we should be thinking about all of our residents and not just, you know, ourselves and the convenience for ourselves. Thank you.
Any, Counsel Montigny?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. In talking about thinking about all residents, I do understand that our tax dollars are important to all of us and how we use it. As I alluded to earlier, Citizens Forum, there's a lot of that going on federally, and a lot of people understand, "Wow, I didn't realize my money was going towards that." So when the real number is about newly acquired voters from last year are barely 300 people from something that costs nearly $20,000, you're talking about a voter acquisition or a customer acquisition price of nearly $70 per voter. So you're going to spend about $20,000, $70 for a new voter. That's how your tax dollars are going when there are so many people's roads and stuff that could be repaired. If you're telling me the customer acquisition price was actually $1.8, like it was mentioned at the public hearing, that would be a huge difference, and I would say, "Go for it." But for me, at $70 roughly per customer acquisition, I think it's ineffective, clearly, or else the price of acquiring a new voter would be much, much less. And I think the Town Clerk's Office does a great job every year of getting the word out, and has always done a great job of providing absentee ballots to anybody who needs them. They don't have a problem getting them. You just call and say, "I can't be there," and that's it. You don't need a doctor's note. You don't need anybody's to hold your hand and say anything more than, "I can't make it," and then they send you one for free. So every voter in town is able to vote by mail if they choose to, and the experiment that happened last year was at $70 per person of newly acquired customers is a waste of money, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other councils? Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. It's been my understanding that some people are confusing early voting by mail with early voting, and I think if we were talking early voting, where people can come to the Town Hall early and come in to vote, I would definitely say we want to keep that. But in listening to people speaking at the, at the public hearing, and in particular, hearing the Town Clerk, Madam Clerk, talk about the expenses that she's going through for the minimal response that she's getting, which she herself said was a wash, I'm afraid that tonight, I'm going to support this measure.
Any discussion by anybody else? Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I understand people like the idea of sending the ballot out and sending, without having to do anything else, you just send a ballot out to everybody in town, and some of them come back. But I agree with Counsel Montigny, the return on investment is simply not worth it. Nobody is going to be denied an opportunity to vote absentee. This is a huge, this is a significant expense. It's certainly not the most expensive thing we do, but it's certainly a significant expense that the town incurs. And I think what is going on in the world today, particularly in our country at the federal level, the questionability now of grant money that we have, we have been, we've been accounting on, even state money may be affected, because a lot of the state money we get is also granted to the state by the federal government. So we're going to, we have to start thinking about where our money is going. And given the, given the past return on sending everybody a ballot, I would have to say I'd vote, I'd vote in favor of this, this matter to not do the voting by, early voting by mail this year. Thank you.
Any councils, any other comments? Any citizens approach?
Kevin Buxton, 52, Charlton Street. I chose not to speak at the public hearing. I thought it was pretty well covered by councilors and citizens. My concern is as far as the early voting. Absentee ballots will still be received and sent out as normal. I think that early, early voting has shown, given the people more flexibility as to come to the poll and cast their votes. As far as cost goes, typically, early voting is done here at the Town Hall during business hours.
Just as a point of clarification, there will, this does not affect, there will be no early voting either way. This is just early voting by mail, so there's no early voting in person.
All right. You just got me a little confused. There will be no early voting?
No in-person early voting.
That's, that's a concern of mine.
That's not allowed in this election. This is only early voting by mail.
Why are we eliminating early voting?
We're not eliminating. There is no early voting, period. It's not by state law. This is just by mail, early voting by mail. I'm sorry.
The last, the last election, I voted downstairs.
Not in June.
Could we have the clerk come up?
All right. I, I, there will be no early voting. All right. Good luck with your decision.
Madam Clerk, I got a question. Are we having early voting at the town hall in person?
No, even if we do early voting by mail, there will be no early voting in person for a local election.
So early voting is out. We're going to go straight to the ballot. We're still going to have absentee ballots?
Correct.
For anybody that, that comes, that can get absentee ballot, they can't make the election?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I understand it. Counsel Dow?
Can you please explain why we did the early voting on the last vote and to the people know why we're doing it sometime?
Right. Those are state elections. So those are mandated, state elections are mandated. Every city, town needs to do that. However, when it's an off year, it's an odd year like this year, it's only a local election, the state leaves it up to the cities or towns on whether or not they want to have early voting by mail, never early voting in person.
Counsel Montegna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the clerk. So can you just confirm, just so the citizens understand, that there has never been in the local elections in June, early voting through the town hall for a week? That's only state and federal and no local election has ever seen that here at the town hall?
Correct.
Okay. And it's completely nothing to do, nothing to do with tonight's vote?
Correct.
Thank you so much.
It's just early voting by mail is what we're voting on today, not early voting in person.
Thank you.
Counsel Rivas?
That being said, even more of a reason to not eliminate early voting by mail where we, you know, we have seen people take advantage of it in the last few elections. And this is something that's fairly new. So I think that by eliminating now, we're not giving it a chance to increase our voter access in our local elections. We have like one of the lowest turnouts, you know, in our area. And so I think that we should give it a chance, especially in light of not having early voting in, in person. So this is a way to really expand access. Like, like earlier speakers said in the hearing, there are people with disabilities that aren't able to come in person. And, and we have an obligation as town councilors and as leaders to make voting easier for those residents that can't come in person. And even though they can request a ballot or absentee ballot, again, they have to make the effort to do that. And I think that we should make it as easy as possible for people who already have struggles in our community to be able to access. And when they get that early voting card in the mail, it, it does, you know, it doesn't make a difference to us, but it makes a difference to those voters. And I think that we have an obligation to continue it and really see how that will affect our local elections. Because again, this is a new, this is something new in our state and we need to give it a chance to work. And so I do think it's worth the, the money. We spend a lot of money on a lot of different things. And we do have federal grants and all kinds of money that, you know, we're, we're nervous about in, you know, as far as our projects in town. But this is something that benefits voters and people have a right to be able to have as much access to voting, especially when we have all these other items, high-end items that we are voting on and we are representing the whole community. And I think it does a disservice to our residents with disabilities in particular that we are limiting their access to voting.
Just a quick comment as far as being accommodating to the voters. One of the biggest accommodations we did was quite a few years ago in the mid-eighties, we moved the election to nicer weather because they were freezing in the early days of March, the first week of March. So they moved them to June. And then they turned around and consolidated the polling place to one place. We still have five precincts, but we constantly trying to accommodate the voter to come out. Did the voter increase the votes from eighty-six to two thousand twenty-five? Has not changed on a sunny day in June or a cold, windy, snowy day in March. So I'm not sure if there is a magic touch to it. The only thing I can tell you is that when you have items on the ballot, like trash, a vote for trash, a vote for schools, a vote for a fire department, a very contested council race, school committee races, people spending money to try and get the vote out is usually why we have a high voter turnout. It's not because it's a convenience. It's usually the cause. The thing that's driving the stick in the spokes on this issue is when you go to the conferences and you find out that your town's going to get a fifteen percent hike on their health insurance and that's going to translate to over seven hundred thousand dollars, all of a sudden you got a town manager coming back to the town hall with the council and saying, you think a little different when you say, ah, it's only twenty-two thousand dollars. So in this case, this is a nice to have, not a have to have. And in the eyes of the council, you have to use your judgment that there's a balance of finance to convenience. And I know we're in a society of, we take the easiest way out, but in this case here, we might have to bite the bullet financially so we can watch out for the finances coming down because we've already lost one grant. We already know our insurance is going up to seven hundred thousand, over seven hundred K. And we're not sure what other grants on the school side we're going to lose, which is going to create a bigger financial crunch. So I think being a little conservative now might pay off later with what's happening at the federal level. I'd just like to throw float that out there. Any other discussion? Counsel Daniels?
I was just informed that on the Secretary of State's website, it specifically states that if a town opts out of early voting, you automatically qualify for absentee ballots. There is no need for any reason whatsoever and it's still the same process. You have to request, you have to, you have to physically request the ballot regardless of whether it's a mail-in situation or an absentee situation, you have to physically request the ballot to get it sent to you so that you can send it back to them. So the process is exactly the same. All we're eliminating is the postcards to notify people that there's a process in place that they have to follow regardless, that they have to follow.
Any further discussion? If not, a yes vote would opt out, a no vote would not. All those in favor? Opposed? Five to one.
Six to one.
Six, I'm sorry. Six to one, we're opting out. Moving on to seventeen. Vote to hold a joint public hearing with the planning board to amend the Southbridge zoning bylaws to add section eight point ten, accessories dwelling units, which complies with the Massachusetts Affordable House Act.
So moved.
motion by Shinya, seconded by Dow.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was taken up by the General Government Committee on February twentieth and was unanimously recommended to the council.
Counsel Shinya?
Mr. Chair, just a question through you to the maybe town manager. As we talked about at that subcommittee meeting, we're not going to set the public hearing until we get the opinion back from the Attorney General's Office, correct?
We did today send over the letter with the, on, actually, let me back up. On Friday, I had a conversation with Attorney Questle. We got an ADUs. We were on another call. We had some conversations about that. The Attorney General's Office usually has a quick turnaround when you give them a date certain. So the letter did go out today to the Attorney General's Office requesting a quick review. We, there is a time element we have to do. We still have to post. So we can set a public hearing date because we have to, by the time we do advertising, then there's a fourteen day and notice to area communities. So we would have the ruling back by then.
So my concern is setting that date and the ruling not coming back.
Attorney Questle has, guidance has said, when you give the Attorney General, she's been very quick about returning these back to the town. That's what her main mission is right now, that very quickly, that those will come back. And we had a follow-up conversation as to, once we have input, if we draft, put in certain elements into a new bylaw, we can send those again back to the Attorney General's Office before they come back for a council vote.
Okay, so, I understand that part of it. So now if I want to have a certain section of that ADU bylaw struck, I will do that during the public hearing, the first reading, like we've done in the past, to strike it and then go through the rest of the hearing with that article struck?
I would say during the public hearing, we take input and then the council determines what they want to put in and then we could send that to the Attorney General's for review before it comes to the council. Yes.
So then tonight would be the night to make a motion to strike out a particular?
No. We have a ruling, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
We have a request from the planning board that drafted it an accessory dwelling unit bylaw. They have requested that we hold a public hearing for public input for that public hearing. They're asking for a joint hearing. So the option could be the planning board could go on their own and hold a public hearing just based on their draft of the accessory dwelling unit and we could hold a public hearing on the accessory dwelling unit. What we're trying to do is it went to the general government, we had a lot of conversation. Now this is simply, this is the draft ADU and we're going to send it to public hearing and ask for public input. And then usually the planning board and town councils usually goes back and says, okay, we had this public input. Do we make these changes before we go out and put it out as a draft bylaw?
So we're going to do the three readings after the?
Still has to go to three readings? It has to go to everything?
Okay, it's at the first.
This is just a public hearing. There's no reading.
I understand. Be at the first meeting. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to eighteen. Vote to amend the Southbridge Code of Bylaws, Chapter eleven, Department Revolving Funds, Section eleven dash five zero zero, authorizing the revolving funds by eliminating and striking our eleven dash five zero zero point three, toter maintenance revolving fund, section and all subsections due to the creation of the solid waste and disposal enterprise fund.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was discussed at the General Government Meeting on February twentieth and unanimously approved to the council on that evening.
No, just a reading. Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Rivas?
Just a quick question, since I wasn't, I didn't get to watch that meeting. So is, so are we doing this because there is the enterprise fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion by counsel? If not, citizen?
Thank you again, counsel, Kevin Buxton, fifty-two Charlton Street. I was a member on the curbside advisory when we went out to bid for the contract. It was a complicated move for the town. I mean, we, we were so happy with our twenty years of free trash pickup that it probably came to a bit of a surprise that it was two point something million dollars to pick up our trash now because we had been enjoying the free pickup. One of my concerns with the toters was when it went out to bid, one of the problems with anybody other than our present contractor picking up the trash, one of the difficulties they had to submit a bid was because the present contractor claimed ownership of the recycling toters. They had passed out the recycling toters. And, and as opposed to new applicants for the curbside program have to pay for their trash toter and their recycling toter. So my concern is, we have five years of this contract. I, I lived through twenty years of a contract where every time I said, geez, you know, could we improve this? Could we improve that? Could we change this? Well, it's under contract. It's under contract. And I'll agree, there's a five-year contract. But there's a lot we can do to improve the town's position in this contract. And one of the things is the fact that we didn't have a local hauler that might have been able to step in.
Hold on a minute. We're way off subject here.
It's recycling toters.
We're discussing eliminating and striking this area of toters, which is the financial end of the next agenda item of the revolving account.
Can, can the council tell me? Who owns the toters?
Who owns the toters?
Yeah, I'd have to research. The only reason for this total revolving fund was the fact that we took monies in and all that. We cannot keep this revolving fund. We still take monies in, but it's all taken in through the enterprise fund. You just can't have two funds. You can't have an enterprise fund and revolving fund. So it's the same way we used to do with, and we have, I believe according to Maritzah, probably two hundred bins that we have recouped, that we have in our DPW facility. And we are using those for, and everything comes through our, our enterprise fund.
And again, this is a financial structure that we're changing on. The contract.
In the past, I've mentioned that I can't, I can't shake the habit of trash and recycling that I've adopted. In the future, I'll try to get a more, talk with the town manager and the council on, like I said, we have four years to come up with a better solution, an improved curbside. You'll be hearing from me. What can I say?
Do we keep this to the financial structure that we're talking about?
John Polowski, three Jensen Street. I've got video where the former landfill operator representative at a border health meeting clearly stated they did not own those toters, that they were, the funds were provided by the state. And the fact that money's provided still for toters suggests that that person from that company knew exactly what they're talking about.
We talking about fixing account, legal matter and accounting matter. We're not talking about any other item right now.
Well, it was brought up in the subject, if I may finish.
Counsel Dow is right and I rule in favor of his point of order. What you've got to understand is what we're talking about is a financial issue, not your toter.
We're sending it back because we already have two hundred toters. I'm going, I wouldn't.
No, you're totally our base, sir. Sir, you're totally our base. You're, we're talking about creating a fund to handle money. It's an accounting equation we're talking about, not the toters, not who owns them, not who the landfill guy is, not the border health meeting. It's how our finance department is going to handle the money. That's why he's calling a point of order.
All was saying is, just one sentence, I'll leave, okay? Are we, are we, am I understanding that we will be asking the state to stop providing funds because we have for this?
No.
Because there's so many things we're not doing.
Again, you're out of order.
Okay, well, I want to go from the eighties to the twentieth century.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion to move the question?
Is a motion to move the question? Is there a second to move the question?
Second.
Seconded by Dow. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed, motion passes. Moving on to agenda, next agenda item, amend the Southbridge Code of Bylaws, Chapter eleven, Departmental Revolving Fund, Section one-one-five-zero-zero, authorize revolving funds by adding the following section. There's no vote on this, tell there's a reading. Go ahead, Counsel Montegna, read the bylaw.
Thank you. This is the first reading. Eleven dash five zero zero point nine point one point one, Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund. Eleven dash five hundred point nine point one, fund name. There shall be a separate fund called the Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund, authorized for use by the municipal treasurer. Eleven dash five hundred point nine point two, revenues. The town accountant shall establish the Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund as a separate account. The treasurer may accept cash or non-cash guarantees. The treasurer may accept cash or non-cash guarantees that may be made to secure performance of the particular obligations. A guarantee would include a letter of credit, performance bond, or insurance policy. Eleven dash five hundred point nine point three, purposes and expenditures, to secure restoration of a public roadway under a street opening permit or completion of work required under a drainage or driveway permit within a specified, specified time. The intent is to return the amount of the deposit if the work is satisfactorily performed, but if there is a default for the municipality to be able to use it to complete the work if it so chooses. Eleven dash five hundred point nine point four, other requirements slash reports, none. Eleven dash five hundred point nine point five, fiscal years. The Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July first, twenty twenty-four, and that is the first reading. Today's February twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
I consider the first reading done. Counsel, did you have your hand up? Moving on to council's forum. If anybody wants to amend it, we usually do it in the last reading on it, just, just point of information. Council's forum, Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I've been attending meetings for the last year or so on a monthly basis with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, I'm the Southwest Worcester County representative as well as the town of Southbridge representative, and I just thought people would like to know a couple of things that are coming up that would be of interest, not all necessarily involving Southbridge, but would be of interest to Southbridge residents. So first off, the tip program for the intersections at Central Street, Fawcett Street, Hook Street, Enhamlin Street, due to begin this spring, that's a total cost of seven point two million dollars. So if you're worried about East Main Street, worry about the registry as well. There's a program in Stirbridge where the, is going to be a roundabout constructed at the intersection of Route twenty and one thirty-one. That's a six million dollar project. It's been pushed back from twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven. So if you feel that there's intersection issues that are up there, and you travel that on a daily basis, you don't need to worry too much for another couple of years as that's been pushed back. In twenty twenty-six, it's scheduled for bridge replacements in Southbridge on Mill Street, both bridges on Mill Street, the one down over the Quinne Bog River and the one over, is it McKinstry Brook? That's a nine million dollar project all told, with some paving to be done as well. That's still on task, on track to be done in twenty twenty-six. Lastly, if you head out of town to the east and you're going toward Dudley and Quinne Bog, that bridge over the Quinne Bog River where you see it's narrowed down, they've got the, the bollards and the, I don't know what you call them, those concrete barriers down there, that's an eleven point seven million dollar project. That was supposed to begin in twenty twenty-six, next year, it's been pushed back to twenty twenty-seven. So there is a lot of intended work to be happening in the area. There's more coming down the road in future years, but it's too far off, is that they're in the early design phases. And so far, there doesn't seem to be an impact with the changes that have been happening in Washington. So so far, everything does seem to be on track for the timeframe that I've given you tonight. And I just thought people in town would like to know, you know, what's going on with some of the things. There's a lot of work that's going to be going on on Route forty-nine as well, the intersection of forty-nine and twenty and forty-nine and nine, and I know a lot of people travel that way to get up into that part of the county, and that's coming down the road as well, no pun intended. Thank you.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I just want to say thank you for all the DPW worker, they did a great job, the storm coming in. And something I want to clear, I think a few gentlemen was confused on item eighteen was total maintenance revolving fund, not a total trash, the one that people put a trash in. I think that's where the confusion, the way the word in here, but I don't think they read the whole section, they just heard total, total, and then that's what they want of the trash barrel there. Thank you.
Counsel Shinian. Counsel Rivas.
I have a couple of different items through you, Mr. Chair. I have been representing the council on the Worcester Regional Transit Authority, and I just wanted to share with residents that there have been recently some listening sessions of the Worcester Regional Transit Authority in regards to some changes to bus routes, but that will not be affecting our bus route here in Southbridge. Our fixed route has, doesn't have any changes at the moment. We also talked about some improvements to cleanliness to the buses in regard, in, in response to riders' input. And so it's really important to continue to communicate with the WRTA and let them know about your experiences on the buses. And, yeah, and just letting you know that there won't be any changes to our bus route here in Southbridge. Most of the changes are to routes in Worcester around the hub. And then I also wanted to talk about a recent visit that Counsel Daniel and I went to Southbridge High School, and we met with the leadership team at the school, and we took a tour of the high school as well as the middle school, and were able to see some classes in real time, also see students from Clark that are implementing the MAX program in the health classes that are connected to the synergy grant through the Health Foundation. And it was encouraging to see the, the atmosphere and the structure in the building, and teachers seemed much happier. Again, we heard from teachers a few weeks ago about the progress that they've been making in their contracts, and we were able to, you know, see teachers implementing their classroom management in the classrooms, and, you know, the new leadership at the high school working together, together with teachers and having input from the teachers. I think that, that has helped the climate. I had also reached out to some of the students who had been part of the protest to get their take on the climate and whether they thought there have been improvements, and some of the students did relay that although they, they still have some, you know, ways to go, they, they do see improvements in the climate at, at the high school. And so that was encouraging. We met with the middle school principal and the high school principal. We asked a variety of questions about a lot of different topics, about some data and about upcoming implementation of some therapeutic rooms in regards to this synergy grant that the school had received and how that, you know, those outcomes will be shared with the community. And so, like I said, I was very encouraged by what I saw and also what I've been hearing from teachers and from some students. And so I wanted to relay that to residents, and also in light of what the school committee has been doing with the work that they've been doing with establishing the CPAC and helping parents do that, as well as all of the leadership training that they've received. And so I think that all of those pieces are aligning while there's still a lot of work to do. I, I do think that I have heard from different sectors and segments of the school community that there has been some progress. I also wanted to share... I also wanted to share in regards to, an earlier speaker talked about the, the projects that we have in town and a lot of the funding that we do get from the federal government. And I encourage residents, as, I'm not sure of my fellow colleagues, but I do contact our senators and our representatives to make sure that they understand how important those appropriations that have already been voted on and, and, and assigned to our community for road projects, for the fire station, for other, other really important projects in our community that are going to move Southbridge forward. And it's important, they, they represent us, and I encourage residents to reach out to our representatives and our senators and let them know how important it is for them to continue fighting for the monies that our communities have already been promised. Thank you.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have something to say after.
Oh, just, just give me a wave. Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, I have nothing tonight.
I'm sorry, Mike.
It's okay.
Counsel, go ahead.
I just have a question regarding a previous agenda item. We voted on a, on a, a motion to move the question. Did we actually vote on the question?
No, it's a reading.
It was a reading anyway.
It's a reading.
And he does take a vote for the reading.
Okay.
Counselor? We moved the question, the question was the reading. We're not out of order, it's done correctly, thank you. Do you have anything else, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Just the agenda twenty-one. Yes, it's next Monday night, March third, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM, the council chambers.
Do I have more to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Opposed?